Hey, Chris.
It's buckly up there. I'm like down here.
Yeah. Yes?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Oh, we can. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Well, that being the case, this being 5:45, I'd like to call a meeting to order of the municipal audit going on quarter appeals Thursday, November 18th, 2021. You don't need a roll call. You know who's here? Do you hear any appearances other than public hearing? No. So we'll move from appearances and move for like motion to approve the minutes of October 21, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconds. Any corrections, changes, additions in the minutes of the 21st of October? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Minutes approved. As indicated in your practice, the first thing on your agenda was wrong. So we'll move right to number seven. Public hearing by James Lindholm and Deborah Effington Lindholm at 1100 Nishishin Trail. Requesting a variance from Minona Municipal Code Of Ordinance in section 48024D for the Shoreyard Setbacks for the purpose of building in addition to the existing property. Instructing a replacement deck, case number is D-011-2021. Would you like to start by telling us a little more about your project?
Sure. Sure. Well, first I'll start by saying that the existing house is at 1100 Nishishin Trail Northeast. And so I don't want to get it confused with the 1100 Nishishin Trail. Okay, so that happens all the time. And this is a brown house. That's a white house. And it's a big deal when we're talking about something like this. So the existing house is 3,220. It's got four bedrooms. And it's got a galley kitchen. That's about six by 10 feet. So the kitchen itself is very small. And we looked, when we looked at the house, that was one of the things that we noted. And still, and actually planned on, we'll just have to we just have to make the kitchen so that it matches the house. We learned from the previous owners that they had gone down this process previously that they had actually sought and received of variance from the city. And then, once they got the pricing, decided not to go forward with the project. Which we can understand. Please take note of that.
Noted.
Yeah. So the goal is to expand the kitchen out where the deck currently is. So we, so then we do the rough and replace the deck, replace any of the entrances, so improving the value of the property. So there isn't any any change in terms of how it would look for our, our neighbors. You know, there would be no impeding of looking at, you know, the view. It wouldn't be impeding any great views or anything like that. So it actually would increase the value of the property. The variance that we're looking for is it really only impacts the, we're fortunate enough to be on, on a corner. So we're on the lake proper on, I don't know what's now called, but it used to be called.
Wachawak.
Thank you. How do you say it?
Wachawak.
Wachawak.
Ocean for muskrat?
Wachawak.
Wachawak. Wachawak.
I need to write that down.
It's on that map up there.
I know, but I can see it, but I don't know that I can pronounce. So thank you, Wachawak. So we're on the Wachawak Bay, and then we're also on the channel. And this really is talking about the channel. So the channel, it has mature trees. They're beautiful. And so this would go out where the deck is. So there's really no change to anything other than where the deck was, now the kitchen would be. So it's not going to change the neighbor's view or anything because the trees already, you know, they've locked the house. So there's no change there. I don't think, it will increase the value of the house at least concern the whole as well. But that's, that's about all I can think of. And most of this was all noted in our application.
Yeah.
But it always helps to hear it. And that's kind of come alive, at least for me. So what questions do you have?
Okay.
You're looking at some good pictures.
Great. So I assume that there's nobody else here like neighbors or others to speak on behalf of this? Before we close the public.
Well, there is no neighbor on the one side of the channel.
Yeah.
And so the neighbor on the other head, on the other side, there also wouldn't be any impeding of you because there are trees on that side. So they're really likely to.
Okay.
Which is a good thing.
Right. Then why don't we, with that, why don't we close the hearing and we'll move to consideration of action. For the Lindhoms at 1100 Northeast Nishishin Trail. Requesting variance from Minona Municipal Code Of Ordinance in section 48024D for the Shoreyard Setbacks for the purpose of building in addition to the existing property and constructing replacement deck, case number Z-0112021.
Yeah, I can just give a, give an overview of the application. I've, I've started to look at contracts here, I believe, about this at different times, the proposal. The, just a couple of points of clarification. The attached site survey does show only one meander line on the eastern face. There is no plating meander line on the northern, along with the lagoon. Best practice along that would be to effectively measure from the shoreline. So there is a variance of salt for the, this addition here through both the north and the east. And they're both the shore yard, as part of the plan. Have been working as well on the, some of the spot elevations to ensure that it is outside of the floodplain. Because this is going to be raised, it's sort of more of the elevation of the deck. It's a four foot elevation, I believe. So that's going to be clear. And that's actually the one contract to have a design beneath it that actually help with central floodwaters as well. And again, the, the deck, as I understand it, that these pieces were removed from sort of down the southern face, closest to the neighbor. Some of that's in pretty bad shape and really just proving and then rebuilding the deck closest to the house. So as I see it, it is just the shore yard request is variance this week's law.
Okay.
Thanks.
Then just to be curious, before I open it up to the numbers. You indicated, Deborah indicated that there was a previous approval or something similar? Did, were you able to find that?
I was able to find it in memory. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was smaller, the addition. So this is an 18 by 17 addition. If, if I remember correctly, it's closer to a 12 foot addition. So the variance does run with the land, but it did not meet the plans or did not align with the proposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You should definitely. So good. Well, with that, I will open it up to the board. As you probably know, you know, the work that we do is, and I'm sure Doug explained to you, very much driven by state statute. It's just, it's, it's never a matter of like it or we don't like it. Or it's, that doesn't bother us or bothers us. It's, it's all based on state statute. First in terms of the, you know, the area variance and whether or not, hardship and whether or not there's unique limitations. So, and focus on public interest. And so that's the basis of the discussion. Well, that all.
So I, I don't know. I guess this plan can confuse my brain a little bit. So is the existing footprint going to remain the same? I mean, you're going to put in the kitchen over what the existing deck is now? I'm looking, this one makes more sense to me. I just, my brain works better with something more specific. Some of it's confusing, but yes, to your question, there's no additional space.
Yeah, there's some, there's some steps that are not necessarily shown here from I don't know exactly which ones you're looking. On the deck itself, there's additional steps that extend out even beyond what our proposed kitchen is. So from an overall boundary of the deck perspective, that kitchen is within that, that perspective line. And we also made sure that we did some adjustments to our deck current, to make sure that we were staying even with, more so within our confines of the existing.
Yes.
I should just point out some of the relevant two sheet one. It's listed as one of four. Those setbacks do not align.
Okay, in terms of water and.
That's actually, just disregard the setbacks.
Okay.
So.
What was that?
Just disregard the setbacks as they relate to, they correspond with the site survey. So that.
Well, you don't. So you're talking about this picture right here?
Correct.
Oh, is there any way you can bring that up on the screen or not?
Yes.
I think that one was done by the architect, not a surveyor. So it's not really accurate.
I'm like.
It's more of a initial, it's more of an initial representation than an actual survey.
The improvements are correct, but just how does it relate to the setbacks?
I, I think I, I need, I really need a clarification on the existing deck structure and the addition itself. I don't see from the plans here the existing deck structure. If I'm looking at, the best example I can use is two of four, plan two of four. Is the dotted line the existing deck? There you go. Thank you, Doug. It says upper deck, but where is, so I'm, I'm assuming that there's a lower deck. Right?
Not exactly. There's, the deck is in several layers.
Okay.
So the upper deck is higher. It's at the floor level of the main level.
So, okay, got it.
So like this, this part right here where it says remove, this is up at, at first floor height. And so is this. And this is all lower.
Right. And now it would all come up.
So the dot, the dotted line there on that line is what?
The proposed kitchen.
So it's not in the exact same size of, as the deck? Is that correct?
You know what? It doesn't, you're right. That doesn't show that it is.
But it doesn't.
I thought it was the same size.
It's not, but it's within the confines of the, of the, you see the stairs there? Is that as far as a setback from the, the lake? It's still within that confines of that.
Oh, right.
But it is, yes, it does extend a little bit farther out than the existing upper deck that we have up there.
Okay. And from the board, as a question to the board. The dotted line then, where the new addition is going, Doug? Are any of those dimensions or setbacks different from what we're talking about from the meander line?
No, the, the survey that's included shows the 17 by 18 addition. And those distances that are shown with this, on the, the site survey with the spot elevation. And those are the correct dimensions.
Okay.
So I'll just pull it up on the screen as well.
A little easier to see it when it's big.
Go down just.
So I'll show it on, on this one.
Okay, alright.
So I think this is the, the existing layout and then the 18 by 17.
Prevention. Sorry. Alright.
So we're, we're 24.7 feet from the shoreline. Is that what we're seeing here?
On the northern edge.
Yeah.
And then this meander line here, so there's a five foot variance for the northeastern corner. And then this one is 40.7, so nine.
Nine point three.
Southern edge. And then portions, so you can see just with how the, the shoreline as well sort of cuts in. Portions of the deck would also need it. You can see the 50 feet there is to the shoreline, but it would be from the meander line, which you can see is closer to 38, something like that. So both, both improvements, both the proposed kitchen and the deck require setback relief.
And then my second question to the locations are, I don't see steps of, of the deck on the plan, and that's part of the building structure itself. And steps, steps are inclusive to setback requirements? Is that correct, Doug?
Uncovered steps may encourage uncovered steps.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alright.
So I believe these would just be.
Okay, perfect.
One thing to be aware of those steps is that we have a, we actually have a walkway that goes from that point out there and goes all the way to the front. And those steps just come down to where that walkway starts so that.
Okay, got it. Or walk?
Yeah.
The boardwalk. Okay, I see there's line there of the.
It has new steps.
Okay. There it is. And this looks a little bit different from what the plan view shows on, on, on on three of four, remodel four plan. And this just shows, that, that shows differently than that plan. That's why I brought it up.
The architect has, has the steps in the wrong spot. They don't align with the boardwalk.
Yeah, we noted that.
They need to shift down.
They have to meet.
Yeah. Yeah. Initially, they were thinking about putting the boardwalk or the steps down right next to the kitchen there. And he said, well, that's not where the boardwalk is. The boardwalk's in the middle, so they need to get the ship more aligned with the boardwalk.
Doug, is that, for the board, is that anything that needs to be addressed as current plans or specific plans of nature before we make a decision?
I would say for the steps, given, given they are permitted to encourage, I would say that, an adjustment to that locationally, as long as, and particularly if that to be the same number of steps and size and things like that, just that location. I think as long as the board recognizes that, I'm comfortable for it to still proceed.
Okay, this one's noted.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You go back to the the previous or has the elevations or
it's one hour?
Yeah, the, yeah, there you go. That, that's the one. Thank you. I think that's the best description of all, if we're trying to figure out setbacks. So the existing deck, the deck is, the existing deck is in, conforms with all setbacks? That, that, so the existing deck, did, did that need a variance at some point or was it ever variance?
I couldn't say specifically. Where it comes through today, the deck would also need a variance. So we typically would allow a rebuild, like for like. But you can see with the dotted line here, it's a little bit different. So that would be sort of city policy for, for that type of thing. I, I do recall the previous kitchen or that addition variance, but I don't recall if that was anything for the deck.
Okay.
So quickly again, if I'm, if I'm wrong. The 17 by 18 is larger than the current deck by the width of the steps. That that you just indicated, no.
That, that's a good way to say. There's steps, well, there's the steps coming off from the existing deck, which are not shown on this particular. But that would, those extend adder beyond what the proposed kitchen would allow to be as far as the setbacks. And when you do make an angle in the deck, you can see what kind of angle that.
And when you didn't make an angle in the deck, I mean, you can see what kind of angle that, uh, there's a corner there that we.
Other comments from board?
Can you tell me what makes it difficult to stay within the existing footprint?
That it wouldn't be worth doing in addition to make an impractical kitchen, basically. So if we, if we only stayed within the footprint of the current deck, it wouldn't be worth the project. Could be a tiny improvement in space.
Well, but, uh, what's the difference if you stayed within the footprint? What, what would the size of the kitchen additionally?
Well, just to point out, any, so hypothetically, if the what to say in the same footprint as the deck, even that would still require variance because it'd be. So, um, it wouldn't, you know, maybe further encourage necessarily, but it would still be a volume addition. Not sure we have that calculation. We can kind of see from the survey, the gap or the difference running along that. Guys, it's, uh, you know, we, you know, when we initially started this, we looked at that. Uh, I don't think we would do that, kind of alluding to what Jim was just gonna say, I don't think we'd do the project if that was all we're gonna be able to get, because it just wouldn't add enough to the, and, and for all the additional construction area. So.
Yeah, cause I mean, I think we're, I, I, I'm just back to where we usually are in these things is the unnecessary hardship.
Right.
And, and going through the packet, we'll look at what listed as unnecessary hardship is really a unique physical property limitation. And I agree, there's a unique physical property limitation, I think, you know, having water on, you know, so much water surrounding your property. It really limits what you can do.
It's a blessing and a curse. That's, I feel very fortunate for me.
Um, you know, so I do see the limits, uh, the physical, unique physical property limitation, this. You know, that's not a typical block in, in the city. So I guess I just want to hear more about what, what the unnecessary hardships, uh, you know, would be that would require experience.
So even if, even if we stayed with the existing footprint of the deck, that would still need a variance. We still wouldn't, we still wouldn't comply. So if we ripped off the deck and mirrored the same shape with a kitchen, it still wouldn't comply. We still need a variance.
And the purpose of the project is to create a kitchen that matches the property to increase the value of the property and, what's the word, the utilization, the appeal. Oh, not really for state statute. I look, I think the same thing. It's like, of course. Right. And it's other things are trying to come up with what would be the unnecessary hardship of, uh, you know, having a bigger kitchen. It's a big house for a kitchen the size that it is. Maybe you can just tell that the house is old. It's from the nineteen fifty's and you can extend it upon now. I think this would be the third or fourth major addition. And so there are, uh, there's an additional bedroom, two actually additional bedrooms, additional living space and office. Those are all large additions. And so the kitchen was originally built for the original size of the house. Now it's, it doesn't.
Doug, I have a question for you, um, or Nancy. Is there any, um, when we're in a situation where we have existing uh, structure of the property that has already been varianced? Uh, if somebody stays within those boundaries and changes the purpose of that space, what does that look like?
Will the variance follow the property?
It, it does, yes. Um, so the, that looking would have the rights. Um, again, I, I don't have it in front of me, but let's say it was a twelve by twelve kitchen or area that was previously approved.
Yep.
Um, that would be permissible. Um, design could change it so slightly, but maybe if it was one story, it should really still be one story. If it's two, you have the right to. And that does run with the land, so they, they would have the right to do that. Uh, but it definitely was not the same as this one. Um, in dimensions and things like that. You know, it's, this is an enlargement such that it needed to come back for, you know, difficult consideration.
Yeah. And I guess I'm, I'm trying to come up with, uh, the unique way to still help the homeowners, uh, is anyone that thought about keeping within the existing boundaries of what you have there with the deck and the, the deck and structure themselves. Right? That, that's kind of what I'm trying to look, look toward. Are you have a really big deck, right, of a certain size? The question is, if they stay within those parameters without going beyond those boundaries with a new structure, what does that look like for a variance? Uh, and, um, and the state statute.
Can you?
Good. Well, one of the problems with that is that, uh, that screen room or that porch on the second floor. When you went to get in addition to not interfere with that from the first floor, considering we're four feet ish off of the ground. Anything that we would do anywhere else within that same footprint of the deck would interfere with some other part of a roof line.
Okay, I see that now.
Yeah.
That's where the previous owners, I think, ended up not, is they would, they ended, they would have to.
So this was.
Yes.
So they're now.
Alright.
So what they, so what they proposed, the initial, the previous owners, is they are gonna actually move that screen and porch over to the middle of the house and then, and then their kitchen in, well, that, that, the cost of that is what included them moving forward for the project is, and same with us, where we're like, we gotta keep that where.
And part, part of this too is to move the laundry upstairs from the basement, so that it's not a hundred steps to get down to laundry, so that that makes, that makes part of the kitchen, um, being that big, is that just all kitchen? Laundry's coming upstairs too.
What are the water issues presently at the, at the property that are gonna be mitigated with this addition?
I'm sorry.
What are the water, what are the water issues that, that are gonna be mitigated with the, uh, with this proposed addition?
How is it?
Yeah, how's it, how's the drainage gonna be improved?
Well, um, we've had the folks come in, we're not gonna be doing what you have the normal cement things.
It was gonna be a foundation and now it's gonna be helical piers.
Thank you. It's gonna be what?
Helical piers.
Next thing you listen to this.
Yes.
Well, in order for the, for the water to be able to run through as though there weren't an addition, that has to be piers, like posts instead of a poured concrete foundation.
Okay.
So. Use the porous surface for the water.
Yeah, it did. It won't displace water from a potential flood or the lake. The water could flow in and out freely, and like the, also there's stills that they're building in, so.
And, um, I was out there with the, the building inspectors as, uh, this lamp, you're sort of developing these plans just to, to work in terms of what would work for the flood plain and all those types of things. And, uh, some of you may have been on the board when seven hundred inch lake came through, um, which that house.
I probably was.
Uh, so that one, um, I don't know if it was helical, but basically it was elevated, uh, with sort of, um, trellis beneath and, and washed stone beneath as well, which helps with the, um, sort of slower discharge of, of water. Um, and that would be, um, to my understanding, at least more would be beneath the kitchen, um, as well. So in some ways, um, it may actually be, be better than just the, the clear run, you know, uh, surfaces.
Although it's not the case that under the deck now, you also have silver forest surface, I mean, you have concrete.
It's not concrete right now.
Right. And so, so if the water is coming out, it's the same, it's a similar porous surface.
Yes.
What you have now. So it really doesn't change.
And then the deck that is proposed would all be one level. Right now, it's step after step after step. So like, an older person couldn't use this deck at all. There's stairs to get from point A to point B on several different planes.
Which is, which is the issue that I have with my ninety year old mother who's just staying with, you know, her. She can't go out on her deck. She can't, there's no plate, there's no handrails and stuff for her to go down on. And so obviously with the new deck, we're, we'll have all the, the appropriate. Stuff for the elderly individuals to.
One of the two raised cars that I showed that was coming off was like a, half of an octagon coming down. There's no handrails on that steps at all. It's, you walk out the front door and it just kind of more like landscaped steps where they just surround it. So it's really not practical to use. Well, not for, for a young person, it's probably fine. Someone who heals when they fall down.
Yeah. What the project do is that you can remove the entrances to the house, and so that'll include, you know, new steps and new guardrails, because they're all, you know, they could use a little improvement. Are you, are you indicating that your mother lives with you permanently?
No, she's visiting for Thanksgiving for a week, but you're ninety years old, so you can't walk outside.
And I hope to be living here for a while, so.
Are there water drainage issues that you can improve?
I don't know.
Not currently. We've done a lot of work, um, you know, you're all familiar with the. First summer we were in the home, and we bought the house on May, late twenty seventeen, yes, like, um, and so, um, we were also fortunate to, you know, have a lot of, of folks helping us to, um, but with that, following that year, we, we increased the, the berms along the channel and, and so we really kind of made that property a little more stable. Um, in, in totality, the house is also fully, um, uh, called a tile. And so we, you know, we do have a basement in this house. And there was, we, we had no water in the house, the whole flooding, so, you know. So, I mean, from that perspective, in this, you know, obviously the additional, you know, flowing into that as well, so. From the perspective, we're not gonna, it's not gonna get any worse, and I'm hoping that we'll make it better as well.
We don't know what's under the current deck. Whether it was built, but I'm anticipating, we're anticipating once it comes fall, that there'll be some gravel put down, so that hopefully that that would help. There, there's no intention or no plan to put concrete or anything like that. You know, some gravel that would help.
So if there had been a, a variance granted before, and this one is different, obviously, because it's a, a, a larger addition. Does that make any difference for what you need to, to, to base this on? The fact that that one was already granted and that one also would have been within the meander line setbacks? Does the burden change?
It doesn't, um, it's not precedent setting in terms of if, if one was approved or something like that. So that wouldn't necessarily, sometimes I do reference it for maybe the full process or something, but it's still, um, I would say each is still, you know, in its own merits.
Okay.
Chris, any thoughts?
Uh, yes. Deb and Jim, can you, I see you've lived in the house for five years. I was just wondering, I, I'm, I'm definitely struggling with the unnecessary hardship. I, I'm hoping you can explain a little bit more about, well, what, what is your life like right now with your, with this kitchen? Is it? Please tell me more about that. Like, is, is perhaps there's a safety issue or, uh, you're unable to?
Well, I can tell you, when I'm doing food prep, there's no counter space. So when I have the oven open, you, one, you can't have the oven open and the dishwasher open at the same time. They, they're, they're not exactly on each other. I don't, I don't want to misrepresent, but here's the oven and here's the dishwasher. And they're that close. There's probably, what would you say, three feet in between? I mean, I wasn't kidding when I said it's six feet by probably ten feet long. So there's no counter space. There's actually, in this, there's a table that's a long and narrow table. It's probably about half the size of this widthwise. And it's about this long. So I don't know, what's that, ten feet? And that's where, if I open the oven and take something out, that's where I have to put things. So when you're trying to prepare a meal, especially a meal for a group, you know, if it's just Gemini, it's okay. But, you know, fortunately, we have a family and they do spend time, up there a lot of time with us because they like the lake. So it's really difficult to work within the kitchen. If I'm baking, there's no place to put anything. There's no counter space. I can't have out the toaster, the blender, the coffee maker and the mixer. There's not enough room.
Let's see, I, I do, I, I do wish you had, I wish you could show us some pictures of the kitchen, you know? I mean, it seems like that, that this, this tiny kitchen is, is kind of the impetus for this whole, this whole thing. So we, we have lots of drawings for, for new stuff, but, um, I don't really know.
It would be on the MLS or on Zillow probably from when the house was sold since it was recent.
Yeah.
I mean, there is, there is the existing floor plan. And if you put, you know, if you put appliances in there, so it says where to remove walls and where you're, so on, where it says remove wall, which is the same wall as the demo, the bathroom wall, that's where you're.
There you go.
That's where you're, you're, we have our refrigerator, a stove and a pantry there, and that sticks out from those little walls there about another foot or two. And then on the other side, facing the lake.
That's where the dishwasher and the sink.
Sink and everything is. So you can, you take those two into consideration, that's that, you know, three feet at most, two and a half to three feet. That exists between appliances on one side and the sinks, sink and the dishwasher on the other.
So, and then the bathroom is getting replaced by a different bathroom. Um, and it'll be ADA bathroom. This one is, it just got a small door. It was a nineteen fifties or sixties house. So it had a, a non, non-current style bathroom. So we would put a wider door in, in the bathroom would be ADA.
So you can see how many step currently, you take a look at that deck as it exists here, how many steps are, you got steps that you have to get up to the deck. You have steps without any railings that takes you into the house, which is that circular or the octagonal one there. And then you got steps that take you down from where they, or, or posing the kitchen on both sides. So you can about imagine anybody that is, you know, elderly or anybody that has any problem getting in, going up all these steps every time you go in there, right? So this, you know, this floor plan that we have is now gonna be all one level. You're gonna, I'm gonna have any sick, you know, safety issues from a, from an elderly perspective. It's gonna have railings around the whole side. Um, so from that perspective, I think it's gonna have a lot more safety than, than what the current existing plan is.
I mean, I got the pictures.
Oh, good. What, is that where I held?
I think so.
I saw the big long table.
Yeah, there it is.
It is. Okay, so there's the bar. Let's find the kitchen now. I don't. Where's a good picture of the kitchen?
Yeah, make sure you get northeast of the White House.
There is, like, you can. Yeah. Oh, here it is.
Yeah.
Here's the kitchen from one side and here's the kitchen from the other side.
Yeah.
So. He's pulling it up. That's awesome. Very good. Thank you so much. There we are. That is, that's the entryway, that's the Latin addition.
There's your kitchen.
There's a table.
There's a kitchen.
While I'm talking about.
So you've got this pretty good sized house, you know, quarter, a full, a full sized family, and then you have this.
I think there's two more, there's like a dining space and then it goes to like.
That's the kitchen.
And you can see the stairs where they wrap around to that. I think that's what you're talking about.
See, and that's an appliance garage right there where it's closed. There's no room to even set anything there. There's the other one. So that's where the, the oven is. You can see, if you go back to the other one, there's the dishwasher. So that's where the oven is. You can see, if you go back to the other one, there's the dishwasher. So they're not straight on, but you can't have them both open and be able to lock. Thank you, that's a good suggestion.
Wait, I still go back to the. Whether that is unnecessarily burdensome, the the zone restriction makes the use unnecessarily burdensome. And that's the, I mean, that's the language that we're working with and that's the standard.
Doug, if that kitchen were to be. Does, if if that kitchen was part of a design of a new home today, would that be a non-conforming? Kitchen, perhaps?
Uh, not from a zoning perspective, there may be building codes that I'm not aware of, but that's not. Something I would be able to to speak on.
Okay.
As a broker, Jim, would you build a house with a kitchen like that and expect the seller?
It wouldn't be a spec house.
Because the kitchen is too small for the rest of the house. I mean, it's not like this is a two bedroom.
Yeah, I understand, like, the house has grown over time, well, before.
It really has. It's had a couple significant additions.
I think when you had the existing infrastructure of the of the house, that kitchen was probably very relevant for that house. But that's not the house now.
If the dishwasher and the oven are both open at the same time. Can a person even walk be- between those two open appliances?
Not without walking around, what, you'd have to go. So here's, here's the oven, here's the dishwasher, you'd have to go like this. You can't go straight through.
Could not go straight across.
So that I would think it's a safety issue. And we use the safety issue as a hardship. I mean, I don't see it here, but I mean, I could probably, I twisted.
I'm, from my perspective, I don't know whether this is the, as Brad just mentioned, the unnecessary. Um, which I think we expect a little bit more to, maybe the, maybe the property limitations again, but just. Just keep looking at the survey of just how, you know, what would actually be buildable if you did the fifty feet on both. Both that would be in a lake side.
I don't think it'd be practical.
Nothing.
Like, yeah, if anything.
Right. I mean, if we, like, to me, in this case, the unique property limitations and the hardship are.
I agree with you.
Enveloped with each other. I don't think we can separate them. This is such a unique property and there isn't any, where do you? Yeah, I don't know what else they can do. Uh, short of saying nothing, and I don't know that that's a satisfactory solution here. It doesn't feel like it's.
And here, I want to reiterate on the, on the, on the plans here, the the problem that we had is we have this. This screen and porch up above, right? And and, you know, we have the, obviously the windows and so on that. There's no way we can bring the kitchen farther into the deck, kind of like what you're.
Because of the roof line.
Because of the roof line and and, you know, the existing windows. So we're we're just trying to use the existing footprint. Um, that perspective, because moving that, that's our, that's our master bedroom.
Yeah, I I do think that's an important consideration, that you've explored alternatives. Uh, but that those are alternatives that would maybe be easier or maybe not require.
Other costs.
You know, a variance.
A cost per given.
Yeah, only. Yeah, so burdensome of the cost, right, of the cost to move really ridge lines and do a lot more. Overall.
Though the, you know.
Certainly, I think is a, is a burden. You know, reasonable alternatives were were looked at.
The previous owners looked at, I I saw their plans and they wanted to move that. And I know it was at least a couple hundred thousand dollars more for them to go ahead and try to move that.
Sure.
And and make that kitchen and that's why it just became cost prohibitive, just like, we just can't make this work.
Is there any relevance to the board? Helping the. Project as a whole. But downsizing that project. In its sheer depth. Does that solve it? Does that help any, does that help anything?
If you want to make it without. In my opinion, no, unless you're going without, not needing a variance at all.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't think it helps them at all, because I think they downside to not gonna do it, because it's not. It's not, you know. It's not resulting in a workable kitchen for them.
I guess my 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 quandary is. If we're, uh, if trying to find a solution of a variance and minimize the setback. Right, uh, the setback. That you're asking for, right? Is is there a? Is there a fine line there of? Ten feet or no, or nothing, or, uh, if they could get five feet, that's something, or? That's my question to the board, as a board specific question.
I feel because they're already out of. The existing footprint is already beyond the setbacks. If, I feel like we just need to either grant them what they're asking for or not. That's just, just my feeling. I don't know about the rest of you.
That's kind of where I'm leaning to, and I, I mean, I understand, like, yeah, you just kind of buy a couple of feet, like, will that get it out done? Make it more palatable, but I mean, to me, it's not. To me, it it's not the. You know, specific setback during the, it's being requested, it's whether or not it's, it it meets the standard. If it meets the standard, then. I don't have a huge problem with the setbacks being requested, it's just whether or not there's that hardship and whether or not that. That factor has been ticked off or not.
I guess, yeah, so the question that that's, right, that evolves is. Yes, there's a plan on the table. Can that plan be? Uh, changed or redeveloped? Um, to satisfy the homeowners as well as the board, as our representation of how much is too much? Um, each property is specific, right? But to what extent? Um, is that, I guess I'm I'm struggling with that.
If they come back with a plan that's requiring, you know. You know, instead of requesting ten, you know, ten feet, they're requesting five feet. It still goes back to whether or not there's an unnecessary hardship. It doesn't change the argument question.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, my, my question, I don't know really who I'm even asking this of. In the room, but you have this house, a sizable house. And so are we prepared here today to say that house can never change? Can't be any different than it is today. Someone else come and buy it and tear it down and put something else up at some point, because they, no one. Probably people will want a bigger, everybody wants a big kitchen. No one's gonna, I mean, I grew up in the LA kitchen, my house wasn't this, isn't this sexy? I get it, I know. I mean, if we say no to this variance, are we then in essence just saying? That house stays the way it is because it's already way over the. Setbacks.
Why would you be saying that? Because this is not the only location, for starters, this is not the only location that the kitchen can go.
Well, that's true.
This is kitchen and a new bathroom and drain line upstairs, so. I mean, there are, and and obviously, there's been, just as you guys just said, this house has been enlarged numerous times. So it's not like. You know, we're keeping it a cottage, so it's been enlarged all the time, so, um. So I guess that would be my thought about these specific questions.
Okay.
So we're not saying that.
We keep talking about the kitchen, but it is important to recognize, I think, that we're adding an accessible bathroom. And moving a laundry from a curving staircase to an old basement up to a main level also. Hey, those are big, those are a big part of the whole thing. The kitchen is the part that sticks out. But if you don't make the kitchen stick out like that, then you can't get an accessible bathroom, and you can't get a laundry on the main level. Which kind of dooms it down the the curving staircase. It's a very narrow curving staircase.
And also that here again, that we are replacing this deck, not only just because of we're putting this kitchen addition in, it's an old deck. And it it's not a safe deck, and so, you know, we're adding some safety and some, in 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 existing footprint for that. As well as we're replacing our whole roof and making that better. I mean, that's just, but I mean. And the other interest is to make them safer as well, so.
No, I get this, I get the safety, I mean, I I totally understand the safety aspect of that deck, totally a hundred percent agree. Or, as safety changes, yes. So, see the path with that.
It all kind of ties together, the way the plan is built.
I think we, I think we should focus on safety. If, if we're gonna try to make a motion, it needs to be on the basis of. Uh, let's see, this, the safety of the home is, uh. The home is not safe because you can't have the oven open and the dishwasher open at the same time. And the the deck's not, the stairs and deck are safety issues. This addition will improve the safety of 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 the home, something like that, right? I'm trying to, I'm trying to, trying to help.
Making a motion, Chris?
I think he's trying to.
I I mean, let's work together to to craft one. I will make one.
I agree, actually, on the safety.
But, I mean. Is the, is the, are the safety issues in the home. Preventing. Unreasonably preventing, unreasonably preventing permitted use of the property. I mean, that would be the question on the safety issue.
Yes, because they want to age in place and they have aging elderly relatives that. Could get hurt in the house.
I I do feel like it's.
That's what needs to be articulated.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's true. We do, we want to age in place, which is one of the big drivers for the laundry coming upstairs. That's another big driver for having the new railings put in to the deck.
Yeah, we kind of, we haven't really said this specifically, but this is not, this, these additions, this addition and these improvements are not meant. For us to sell this home and move on. We're making these because we want to live in this home for the next twenty years. And unfortunately, we're not young anymore either, and, you know, so these are improvements for our benefit as well. And the benefit of all those folks that were gonna be visiting us and or staying with us, and, you know, my mother's a good example.
Chris, with some more tools?
The, what they say helped you press formulae?
I don't know how much I, I don't want to insert myself too much.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the, I felt like I I wasn't able to hear you guys when you were talking about the. Stairs and the deck with respect to safety. I had trouble hearing all that.
If you take a look at the plans of the deck, the deck is on two different levels right now. And unfortunately, the way the deck is structured, the, there's stairs going up to the one section where the kitchen is proposed to go. New addition. And then there's also these stairs that go up in into a sliding doors into our dining room. And none of those have sufficient.
There are no railings.
Railings. Now, could some be designed? Maybe, but you look at, you look at the design of that deck. There's, there's nothing really practical that you can do to kind of make that deck safer without making it look really ridiculous. Um, and so the the way we're proposing this new addition is we're gonna put this new addition in and that whole deck will now be one level. You know, coming out of the kitchen, coming out of the dining room, and so literally, you know, anybody can get on there without any, any safety issues at that point.
Apparently, the sliding doors open, there's double sliding doors that open. And the platform, I guess I would call it a platform, is half of an octagon and there are no railings. So to get down to the deck, you walk out and there's an octagon, you know, half of an octagon and you can walk down. But there are no railings there to get down to the lower level or the main level of the deck, how it is now. So I hope that makes some sense.
Yeah.
So that's a safety issue. And then the stairs inside that go down to the laundry are curved.
Yeah, those look pretty intimidating to me when I was looking at the Zillow listing.
You shouldn't try folding the laundry and going down them. I've fallen more than once.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're not, you know, obviously, we're not changing those, but they're, they're not, they're cold, and so they're, they're not only curvy, but they're narrow. And so trying to take even something down there, you're kind of going like this down the steps to get down to the.
Okay, well, I'll move to approve this request. The unique. The unique. Such that a variance would be required to. To, uh. Remodel the kitchen and the decks to improve the safety of the home, so that the owners can age in place.
So that's the safety is the unnecessary hardship that you're articulate.
Yes.
Uh, and then unique physical property, obviously, being the.
Being on the corner of the. Two shorelines.
The public interest. Can you speak to the public interest as well, Chris, since we usually try to do all three?
Well, uh. With respect to. The decks. It sounds like. The multi-leveled. Unique shapes of the multi-level decks are, um, are hazardous and. Pose a a risk to. To visitors. And. And family, pardon?
Yeah, I was actually referring to the third, uh, the third item, which is no harm to public interest, so we don't see. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Yeah, incidentally, have have, I I know you don't really have next door neighbors, uh, on two sides. But you have neighbors on the other side of the channel. Have they, are they aware of this? This proposal, this project?
Yes, our neighbor on the other side, his name is John. I've got to look up John's last name, but, um, we talked to him about the kitchen project. He's pretty excited about it.
We know, we know all those folks very well across the channel across from us. We know, we know all those folks very well across the channel across from us. And we talk to them regularly. They're all familiar that we are planning, planning to do this project. We've been talking about it for quite a while back. We were, this was, this was on our target list to do it in 2020. Unfortunately, there was a, something that happened in our region that kind of threw us back a year. So, so they're all very familiar that this project has been on the docket for us for a while.
Okay, so your neighbors are aware of the project. It will not block their view. It will not impact their view or, or enjoyment there of their properties.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I believe most do have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All those?
Hi.
Hi.
Close?
Nay.
Nay.
Is that two to two?
It is.
Yes.
Now what?
Doesn't the chair have to vote?
No, this is an adjacent where I can you know, two to three, for three to two.
Any answer?
Yeah.
Can we have an internal conversation as the
Okay, yeah, we could do, we could do that.
Great.
I think you're on live and you're recording.
Yeah, it's a problem.
Yeah, can't be closed.
We can have a close or not, can we? So they need to come back in? Is that correct?
That they have to come back?
I don't think we can kick them out of the room because they could, anyone could come. So I don't think we can kick them out of the room. That's, that's my perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand. But yeah, I don't think you can.
As a resolution for the between the committee. It's fun. I just have to think some questions, that's all.
Are we always just four members?
There's five with the chair. Right, Doug? Yes.
Five with the chair.
It seems like a bad, a bad number to have for.
You got the chair. You got five.
It's five because the chair can, and the chair is a voting number.
Oh. So it's up to you, Chair.
Yeah.
What do you think? Do you want to have that?
Well, I don't know if there can be any more conversation. That's the question. The question is, in the board, can there be any more conversation or is it voting only?
And then if there's further discussion, we can have further discussion after, after the vote.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that.
So this, depending upon the result, the motion could pass or fail, and then there could be more discussion.
And potential, yeah, and some basically for further discussion instead of, yes, and because the meeting's not closed until the, correct, we vote to vote.
Okay. I'm going to vote nay. If there's anybody on the board who'd like for the discussion. Is there something in particular? I think there's a resolution that they can always resubmit, correct?
Yes.
They can always resubmit plans for a variance. If there is a different plan or they can be in place to resolve some of those questions that we've had as the board, that is our position here, I think.
Like make it smaller, is it?
I'm not sure what direction what those are because I'm unclear.
That's not our, that's not our job, our, our presence to give a direction, but there can be, I don't think there was, if there's a yeah, there's a different plan to the encroachment of the variance seems to be sizable to the property. And with the mention of multiple variances to the property already, what's the next question at hand of if there is an addition to the property, is there another variance to be requested? So how many points of how many variances need to be, or can be requested to the property when we're talking about state statute and, and setback requirements?
I'm, 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 and I think everybody here is, I'm totally satisfied to wanting a bigger kitchen. Or, but you know, I to me, it just doesn't, it doesn't rise to or the fact that you might have to remove a little bit in your kitchen to, if you had both dishwasher open, I mean, I, I'm, it's not that I'm not sympathetic to that, but but I don't think it rises to the level of unnecessary hardship at the state level. The safety issues are on the deck. Certainly, I understand the rules. There's nothing preventing you from me doing that, but I, but I'm just really struggling with the plan as a whole. And I think the points we made, I, you know, proved this, you know, where does it stop? I mean, you know, I mean, every time that somebody came in and said, I need a bigger kitchen, I was starting wanting to do that. Which is why, which is exactly why the state statute is written the way it is. But it's not just a matter of somebody wanting bigger, right? This is why Chris was struggling with the whole issue. Trying to find, trying to articulate something, just more than that, because that's not
Does the state statute refer to the meander line or does the state statute refer to the property? Which are different.
It would be based on the city ordinance, which is the meander line.
So is it still a state standard that you need to meet when it's the city ordinance?
The statute would be the the guide with which you would enforce the ordinance.
Question, municipality, specifically municipality or state issues?
Well, we're trying to satisfy the state burden. But we're using two different standards. One is the standard of the city ordinance, which is the one that is the problem here. We don't have a problem with the property lines. We have a problem with the meander lines, which is city ordinance. So we're trying to meet, meet a state standard, but following local ordinance. So it seems like they're in conflict here to me. Because if we're trying to meet state standard, then it should be a state standard. And that would be the property line. The city ordinance is more restrictive. So we should, we should be able to go, if you're trying to satisfy the state to approve a variance, then you should be able to use state standards for that part of it.
State is minimum, just like code requirement, and every municipality can enforce at a higher level or different, or different measurement.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is we do, we, we could meet the state standard by using the property lines, not the meander lines. And you don't have to, then for the, to meet the ordinance, you don't have to satisfy state standards. You have to satisfy the state standards, which I think we do, even with this addition the way it is.
Doug, you may respond to that.
I wouldn't, I, I think that's just a mischaracterization of some of this, but we're not necessarily using a state zoning ordinance. We are enforcing the city's ordinance. It's really the statute as it relates to the, which is the decision, the hardship, obfuscation's interest. It's not referencing, you know, statewide or countywide or anything like that zoning ordinance, you know, it is the city's ordinance that we're referencing. It's really the statute for giving a variance to that, you know, to the city's ordinance. So I'm not sure.
And it's also a fairly standard. Essentially through backer tests that a lot of municipalities adopt into their zoning ordinance. So it's, it's fairly standard.
Yes, I have received one application for the December meeting, ideally to try and target that December 16th meeting. Is that something the board has availability for in terms of, so it's the first day of the month, the regular meeting changes that. Just wanted to check it through it out for, for that.
Yeah.
Yes. Hey, Chris? Chris, can you hear me?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I can do December 16th.
Great, thank you. So I believe it's just going to be the one application. We're getting pretty close to that submitted deadline. But yes, we'll have a
Updates this discussion on DI efforts? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I saw.
Meeting is adjourned.